Good evening. This is the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Town Council. I'll open the meeting now, asking you to join us in the pledge to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask you, keep in mind our first responders and our servicemen and women around the globe, as well as the, all of the conflict and unrest throughout the world. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, I'm required to ask if anybody is taping this meeting. Please identify yourself. Seeing none, I think we can move on. So, item three on our agenda is public comments. Jeanie, do we have anybody signed up for?
No one's contacted me, no.
Don, do you see anyone in the audience that?
Nope, nobody.
Okay. Number four on the agenda is council comments. Do we have comments tonight from any counselors? Okay, we are on. A manager report.
Good evening. What happened? You guys got? Something I said. Good evening. I had the privilege of attending the thirty-fourth Annual Firefighter of the Year Award Ceremony in Worcester on November twenty-first. Two members of the East Long Meadow Fire Department, Matt Adams and Brian Drury, were awarded the Governor's Citation for Meritorious Conduct for their actions in attempting to save a drowning man from the Westfield River back in April, while they were off duty, I might add. So, congrats to Matt and Brian for their well-deserved distinction and, and thank you to all our firefighters and first responders who put their lives on the line every day to keep our community safe. We had a West, uh, Westcom Board of Directors meeting Friday the first, and I just got back from one about fifteen minutes ago, to discuss the budget procedure for future years and tonight, more specifically, the FY twenty-five budget for Westcom that has to be submitted, uh, January twentieth, I want to say. So, we went through the first draft and we'll, we'll have another meeting in January to sort of finalize that budget. We've been meeting with Whip City Fiber, I think, twice since our last council meeting, trying to sort of pick the best process for our project and rolling out this fiber. Negotiations have gone quite well. Uh, Westfield's been great. They've been willing to meet with us on multiple occasions, obviously, and, uh, but I think we're probably gonna get our applications in for make-ready work and design as a sort of a phase one to figure out what it's actually going to cost as, as some of these prices have, are just estimates based on what they think the work is going to be. So, I think if we can get to a point where we know what the work is going to be, uh, we'll be a lot better off. So, that information came in, I think, Friday afternoon. Um, I'll try to communicate that to you. Me and Ryan are gonna vet it and, uh, I'll try to communicate that to the council at some point next week. Rebecca and I have been meeting with our Director of Municipal Finance, Kim Collins, to prepare the budget memorandum and sort of a strategy. That's gonna go out Friday the fifteenth. So, that's, that'll provide instruction and direction for all the department heads as they prepare their operating budgets for FY twenty-five. We streamlined the process last year a little bit by having the department heads enter directly into munis. And Kim has added a few more, uh, processes that will make us even more efficient. So, we're excited about that. Not really excited about the budget, but, uh, the process is the part that's fun. Mass Gaming Commission Community Mitigation Fund recently changed their grant program process to a, a, a block or more of a block grant process, which I think most people are more familiar with. We're eligible for three hundred and twenty-five thousand this year, um, and possible grant funding. The eligible project areas are community planning, transportation, public safety, and gambling harm reduction. We sort of had a first brainstorming session, Rebecca and I, Bruce, Fanny, DPW, both, both chiefs, um, and Aaron Kober, Director of COA, to try to get some ideas that, um, deadline's January thirty-first, so we gotta, we gotta put some projects together. But, um, that's sort of a use it or lose it thing. If you don't use those grant funds by the end of the fiscal year, they, they sort of resets for next year. East Long Meadow Police Department coordinated Toys for Tots event on December second. Stuff the Cruiser event was sponsored by, excuse me, Munson Savings Bank, Mascaro's Towing and East Village Tavern, who hosted in front of their location. Donations brought to Channel twenty-two the next morning, equivalent to three cruiserfuls of toys. So, uh, that was a pretty cool event. Special thanks, obviously, to everybody who, uh, chipped in and took time to donate. Um, and Jeff Niznik and Sergeant Mike Ingalls, sort of from the ELPD, sort of spearheaded the event. So, thanks to them as well. I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season. We look forward to what is sure to be a prosperous and exciting new year for our community. Let's be thankful for, for all the things that we have and, and what we will become together. Same team, home team, is what I like to say. So, that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody have questions for our manager? Okay. Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is communication, correspondence, and announcement. And we are in receipt of an email from Mr. Craig Jernstrom in response to Council President Page's November first, twenty twenty-three letter regarding the purchase and/or lease of three eighty-two North Main Street. I would ask Connor if he would read that letter into the record, please.
Sure. So, on December eighth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Jernstrom wrote, "Thank you for the letter of November first, twenty twenty-three. Paragraph one had stated that there were not funds allocated for the purchase slash leases of three eighty-two North Main Street. This is the reason for my contacting the council as I am concerned about some actions that have been taken or possibly in violation of six dash two of the town charter. Paragraph two states that purchase slash lease payments are typically under debt service. I could not see these funds in the debt service for FY twenty-four. These funds are shown for the building department and two-point-four million is shown in free cash for the purchase. I have not located the three-point-six million. Regarding paragraph three, I see where most, if not all, buildings do have long-range plans in the capital plan, the exceptions being Seventy Maple Street and three eighty-two North Main Street. On December eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, a three-year lease agreement was signed for three eighty-two North Main Street. The lease was to be effective January first, twenty twenty-three, but voided if the town purchased the property by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. How can this unfunded agreement be entered into by the town? The purchase never happened. In June of twenty twenty-three, two checks were issued for lease payments for twenty twenty-three. I do not believe the town occupied any of the space until June, which one, which was when renovations of the office space began. Over thirty thousand dollars paid to lease unoccupied space. The town moved a few departments into the space in July and among uh, six thousand one hundred thirty-three dollar lease payments are being made. According to the open checkbook, the payments are being charged to the DPW under building maintenance. How can that be? On January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, a purchase and sale agreement was signed by the town to buy three eighty-two North Main Street for five-point-eight million dollars. Five percent, two-hundred-ninety-thousand-dollar deposit check was required according to the agreement. The funds would be returned if the building was purchased by February twenty-eight, twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, or if the town elected not to purchase the building by that date. Did the town get these funds back? Why was the building not purchased? Again, how can this agreement be entered into without the proper funding? I look forward to your response. I am not sure if I will be able to attend the December twelfth meeting. Please have this letter right into the record if I am not present. Thank you, Craig Jernstrom.
Thank you. Welcome. Jeanie, no other communication or correspondence?
Just.
Thank you. Moving to item seven on the agenda, public hearings and approval of a change of manager and alteration of premises for Mess LLC doing business as East Village Tavern, fifty-three North Main Street. This is to be held at six fifteen, and since we are not at the appointed time yet to begin the hearing, I will entertain a motion to move out of order and continue with the agenda at such time that we can go back and meet the time requirements.
Where on the agenda do we want to move to?
We can start with, um, we can start with the licensing.
I move to move out of order to porch of the day, licensing matters until such time as it's six fifteen and return to the normal order of the agenda.
I second it.
This and all other, um, votes tonight will be by roll call because, um, we are short two folks around the table and Counselor Marilyn Richards is joining us by Zoom. So, the motion to suspend the agenda and move to licensing matters, Anna.
Yes.
I am a yes, Connor?
Yes.
John? Marilyn?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, under licensing matters, approve a change of manager and change of officers, directors, and LLC managers for Pride Operating LLC doing business as Pride number six oh two thirteen North Main Street. Do we have the applicant here or attorney?
Good evening. Yeah, attorney Channing, uh, for Pride Operating. I apologize for my nasal voice, but it is the season, right? Business address, two forty-six Kaia Street, Springfield, Massachusetts, uh, proposed for your consideration. A couple of operational changes as well as, uh, some corporate changes. There's actually three proposed corporate changes, obviously subject, uh, to the ABCC's approval. The first one is a change of the LLC managers. Pride Convenience Holding will still remain as the owner of Pride Operating, but would no longer be an LLC manager. Do two proposed new LLC managers, the CFO and the Executive Vice President of Pride, as well as we're proposing to have the CEO as an identified officer for Pride as well. Just some clerical errors. I think you may recognize that there was a purchase last December. We're now going back, annual review, feel it's appropriate, uh, change on the corporate level. Furthermore, we have a proposed, a manager change of the operation. I believe Sarah may be online.
But, um, I went to promote her. She disappeared, so.
But if not, uh, I defer to the council, but perhaps I could speak on her behalf until, so I can speak. Sarah's our, our proposed manager. For record, she's been there. If you're familiar with the, um, station, she's there. She's been the manager, been employed by Pride for a number of years. I'm happy to report that. The current listed licensed manager actually got promoted within the company. So, at this point, we do, uh, propose to have a new, a licensed manager on the premises. She's familiar with all the tip certifications, the importance of none of the hours of operations, but also identifications. She appreciates the responsibilities and implications it means to be the manager. We do feel that should be an adequate, uh, proposed manager for your consideration to be listed on the manager as well. Obviously, subject to the ABCC approval. So, those are the, the proposed, uh, changes for your consideration. Any questions? I'm certainly here to answer anything.
Any questions from council? Think it's pretty straightforward, mostly administrative?
It is. Yeah, obviously, it's subject to the state approval. I could, uh, not speak out of school, but obviously, this is submitted to every single license we have in all the communities. It's, uh, set forth. We've vetted everything, looked at it all. We feel that it's complete. But obviously, we appreciate your consideration and time. It's matter.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, John, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve change of manager to Sarah Fitch and change of officers, directors, LLC managers for Pride Operating LLC, DBA Pride number six oh two at thirteen North Main Street.
I'll second that.
It has been made and seconded. Um, we'll start with you, John.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
I am a yes.
And? Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. Have a happy holiday.
Okay.
It's six fifteen, so we can just step backwards on the agenda and, um, go back to our hearing to approve a change of manager. So, this will be a public hearing for liquor license, change of manager, and alterations of premises for the East Village Tavern. Council members at the table are John Portia, Connor O'Shea, I'm Kathleen Hill, Anna Jones, and joining us on Zoom, Marilyn Richards. Uh, Jeanie, would you read the legal notice into the record?
Sure. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws that Mess LLC, DBA East Village Tavern, fifty-three North Main Street, East Long Meadow, apply for a change of manager and alteration of licensed premises application. Town Council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at six fifteen P M in the Council on Aging Media Room, three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. The hearing can also be attended via Zoom webinar. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Okay, thank you, applicant and his counsel are here with us this evening. So, Attorney Kelly, if you want to make the presentation?
Sure. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Dan Kelly, I'm lucky enough to be the attorney for licensee. To my left, your right is, uh, Mr. Deserow, uh, who is the new proposed manager. Uh, the current, the current manager is John Sullivan, who is also one of the owners, who I believe is appearing on Zoom. Um, that's simply all this is right here. You'll see no, uh, difference. If you've ever been in there, been by there, dealt with him at all, at all, uh, there'll be no change really in anything aesthetically. It's just on the license will be Mr. Deserow, who's in effect been there nearly every day for the past year or so. Um, if you look at his application on page seven, you'll see that he has a long and extensive history of, uh, managing and, uh, food and beverage at a lot of local restaurants and bars, some of which you've probably have been aware of, um, that are all well-run. He's never had any real problems with any, uh, commissions, boards, or ABCC. He will be, he is tip certified. He is crowd certified. All of the managers there are, are crowd certified and all the employees that go anywhere near the alcohol are all tip certified. It's a condition of employment. There's about forty employees up there in total. Um, so that's it. He keeps his only job. It's a full-time job. He lives just over the line in Springfield. Um, and you'll see him up there, uh, probably fifty-plus hours a week at any time you go in there. So, to keep it brief, uh, that's our presentation.
Um, I've been in this industry my entire life. I enjoy it. Um, the Sullivans are my family. I take pride in everything that I do. I've been running fast casual restaurants, I guess we'd call it, my entire life, and I enjoy it. We love to be part of the community, so, uh, I look forward to approving. I enjoy being part of the community, so thank you for having me tonight.
Good. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to offer input? And if so, I would ask that you state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, or hearing none, I will, uh, close the public input portion of the meeting. We need a roll call for that, Jeanie.
Right.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion of the meeting so that we, the council can move forward.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Marilyn, we'll start with you.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
I am a yes and Anna.
Yes.
Okay. And now, um, as far as the change of manager, um, the council has the opportunity to address that. If anybody has any input?
Just a quick comment. I mean, so far, I've been pleasantly happy to have you guys as a member of the community and everything seems to be working out well at your location, so.
Thank you.
Happy to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? And, um, I should have made a notation.
I know.
About this when I opened the meeting, uh, it, this says, the title is, "A Public Hearing to, uh, Consider Change of Manager and Alteration of Premises." The only piece we can act on this evening is the change of manager because the alteration of premises component must go before our planning board, and I believe that hearing is set for.
Speaking from tonight.
It takes with the nineteenth.
We already got our notice.
And, uh, assuming that, you know, goes without any hitch, then, um, we can, well, what I'll do this evening is continue the hearing and, um, pending the outcome of the planning board and set it for six fifteen on the ninth of January, which is our next.
Thank you.
So, that said, um, John, no, I'm sorry, Connor, it's your motion.
Sure. I move to approve the change of manager to Matthew Deserow for Mess LLC doing business as East Village Tavern, fifty-three North Main Street, and to continue the public hearing for the alteration of premises for the same applicant to January ninth, twenty twenty-four, at six fifteen P M.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Quick, John, some question. So, we would, would we reopen when we come back on the ninth? Would we technically reopen the public hearing portion to a second?
It's continued. So, yeah, you just, yeah, you start where you left off. You just follow the same protocol.
Don't have to do the legal notice over. It's just a continue.
You just move. Any other questions? Okay, motion's been made and seconded, so voting. Anna?
Yes.
I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been made and.
Thank you.
Move unanimously.
Thank you so much. Yeah, have a great holiday.
See you next month.
Next month, yeah.
Okay, back into item eight, licensing matters. We are down to a new approval of a change of manager for Ninety-nine West LLC doing business as Ninety-nine Restaurant and Pub, three ninety North Main Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Is she, he or she online?
Yep.
So, this applicant is Ms. Jill Marchuka. And. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so you have an opportunity now to, um, speak on behalf of this application if you so choose?
Um, nothing would change with the building aesthetically or any of the policies and procedures. It's just, um, a change of manager. So, I have been working in East Long Meadow already, but I've just been promoted to general manager. The previous one has left, so I've been with Ninety-nine about ten years. I live over in Holyoke, so I'm pretty close to the location.
Anyone on the council have questions? Pretty straightforward?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I will entertain a motion for a change of manager.
Sure. I, um, move to approve a change of manager to Jill. I'm gonna butcher this.
Marchuka.
Marchuka for Ninety-nine West LLC, doing business as Ninety-nine Restaurant in Pub, three ninety North Main Street.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
And John? Thank you, Ms. Marchuka. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle's Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road for a Christmas carol and musical celebration on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I move. Jeanie, all of their application is in order, correct?
What's that saying?
My fault.
No, no, I quit myself. All of the paperwork for the one-day liquor license.
Yes.
Okay, and Anna, um.
Sure.
Motion, please.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle's Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road for a Christmas carol and musical celebration on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, six to eleven P M.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, also a roll call, John?
Yes.
Yes. I am a yes. Anna?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That, uh, is approved as well. All right, we are flying here. Santa's reindeer. Okay, now we have a licensing committee update, and I will, as chair of that committee, be happy to give you that update once I sign my proper paperwork here. There we go. The licensing, uh, subcommittee met on November seventeenth to discuss a range of, um, items that have come before it. The committee is made up of myself as chair, Counselor Anna Jones, Lieutenant Steve Manning of our police department, Kathy Hood, Town Clerk Jean Quaglietti, who is ex-officio, and Council President Ralph Page. Uh, our Director of Public Health, Tammy Spencer, also attended the meeting. A number of items, as I said, came before the council. Uh, the first one is regarding Zane's Smoke Shop, but I'm going to, uh, move around that report and do it under number five because there's an item specifically for that. We discussed the notion of common vicular licenses, which is a license that, uh, an establishment must have if it not only produces food. If it's required to have one if the food is consumed on the premises or the opportunity to be consumed on the premise. Am I being clear enough with that, Jeanie?
Yes.
And so, uh, we have a number of establishments that have the common vic license, but in starting to go through records with, between the clerk and the, uh, Ms. Spencer, it's become apparent that some, uh, may not have applied for one and more or less have simply, uh, through no one's fault slipped through the cracks, if you will. So, uh, Jeanie and, uh, Tammy Spencer are cleaning up that process and, and sending letters to those that may need to apply for one. It's a nominal fee. It's just more paperwork and being in compliance with, uh, state, uh, laws. So, that was relatively, um, uneventful. We also discussed the issue of Elmcrest Country Club, uh, specifically that, um, the golf course had closed earlier this year, probably a little bit in advance of what you would call the close of the golf season. But the concern was that, um, their liquor license, since a major fire several years ago, allows them to serve alcohol from a cart, a drink, drink cart, if you're a golfer. And, um, there has been some concern, uh, around that that the alcohol that is served on the cart is not being purchased from a distributor and, uh, stored on the premises. So, uh, we are in conversation with Elmcrest right now to get that verification, and, uh, they must comply with that to prove that alcohol is being delivered to East Long Meadow at that site and in fact is stored there. So, that'll come up again when we approve licenses this evening. And finally, um, back in two thousand nineteen, the council took, uh, an act, took, voted to make the, um, East Long Meadow Public Police Department an agency of the, the town local licensing authority so that they could, on our behalf, uh, go onto a premise and act on anything that they felt needed their attention, specifically matters of unrest or concerns about non-compliance. What needs to happen there, uh, now to make it official for us is we, the, um, Jeanie and, and, and Ralph Page will work on specific, um, language to that effect to memorialize it, and it'll be incorporated into our local rules and regulations around alcoholic, uh, licenses. But that, that's down the road a little bit, and that's likely that we'll see a motion for that. But that, that's down the road a little bit, and that's likely that we'll see a motion for that in June, uh, January or February, depending on.
Yeah, we'll have to create language to amend the bylaw.
Amend the bylaw, and then it'll go to the committee. So that's coming up, but, um, it's almost more procedural than, uh,
Kind of reference.
Anything to, um, and there's nothing earth-shattering about it. Let me say it that way. The committee also decided that, um, we meant it was too late in, in the license approval process to make any adjustments to the twenty twenty-four license fees. So we agreed that we would wait until, or re-reconvene in June of twenty twenty-four to determine whether or not any of the fees required an increase. You might recall, if you've been following, uh, the tenure of the new government, that in two thousand seventeen, when the subcommittee was first created, we undertook a review of all licenses and determined that the fees had not been adjusted since nineteen eighty-nine. And so at that time, we adjusted the fees and in, in truth, it was a significant adjustment. And because of that, we've decided since then that, uh, given, certainly we had COVID and then just given the other financial issues in the market, we would leave those rates alone. And so we will undertake a review of them in June. And it may be that they'll stay the same and, or slightly go up. But that essentially is the information on the finance of the, the licensing subsidy. Okay, now. Next item, Zane's Smoke Shop. This was a matter of major discussion at the subcommittee meeting and the reason for our director of public health to, uh, join the meeting. Um, the health department is the enforcer for all, um, alcohol and food-related, I'm sorry, tobacco and food-related, um, matters. And, um, she submitted to us a timeline of uh, violations that Zane's Smoke Shop has been, uh, served with running from June of twenty twenty-two all the way up until November twenty-eighth, just a few weeks back, of twenty-three. There are innumerable violations for the, the same, um, fence, um, not having a, a permit. Their permit is out of date. They had tobacco products that did not have a proper tax stamp on it. There was a sale to a minor. Uh, and they were fined a thousand dollars for that, which they have paid. In June of this year, a, a second sale to a minor, a fine and a seven-day suspension. That fine was paid. In August of this year, there was a five, another sale to a minor, a five-thousand-dollar fine and a thirty-day suspension. Currently, they are under, for additional violations, a thirty-day, um, closure for suspension of all of their, uh, licenses. And I should note that, um, the, the food license also includes the sale of alcohol. They do have a beer, wine, beer and wine license. Uh, given the egregious nature of all of these violations, the, it was the feeling of the licensing subcommittee that, uh, they recommend strongly to the council that, uh, the council considered the revocation of this license. In order for us to do that, and we do have the authority under Mass Law and our own bylaws to do that, but we must, uh, give the owner of the license, uh, due process. And he will receive a notice. Uh, so this is how the process goes. The, the person, the holder of the license will receive a notice stating that a disciplinary hearing will be held on such and such a date to consider the matter of revoking the license. Um, discussion at this point before I ask for a motion.
Laid out the timeline well.
Well, Ms. Spencer laid out the timeline well, and it's, for them, it's becoming very frustrating and, uh, time-consuming job because at each time that they are visited upon, there's either the same violation or additional violation. So, they're, they're very clear in their position, and I think now, given, given the nature of that, the council should be following suit. So I would entertain a motion to notify the, um, license holder at Zane's Smoke Shop of a hearing to, uh, consider the revoking of the, um, license, alcohol license for that property. Um, and we can conduct that hearing at our January ninth meeting.
So I move to notify the license holder of Zane's Smoke Shop of a hearing for possible revocation of their license at our said January ninth meeting?
Yeah.
Of twenty twenty-four.
Do we have to say a certain time for that, Jeannie? It's not a public hearing. It's just a dis-
It's just a hearing, right. Um, you don't have to specify a time.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call again. John?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
I am a yes. And Anna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and then, um, also attached to your backup information tonight is the, uh, called Exhibit A, is our annual approval of twenty twenty-five licenses. I will entertain a motion so that we can begin discussion.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four annual license renewals as presented in Exhibit A contingent upon the licensee's compliance with all town departments.
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Jeannie, a point of information. I know we've gone round and round about this. On Zane, since it's our intent, intent to hold a hearing to not, uh, allow them to have the license, do we accept them from this list tonight?
I would suggest that.
Okay.
Because they're non-compliant.
Right. Okay, so, um,
Although you could, although.
I know. Jeannie and I and Mr. Page have gone round and round on how the-
Motion is worded this way. They would not receive their renewed license because they're non-compliant.
Okay.
So you could hold it until they comply or the results of the hearing.
Yeah, so we should approve it and you'll hold it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then in that case, we should just approve Exhibit A, uh, as is.
Unless you want to address Elmcrest in this motion.
Well, Elmcrest, uh, we would, Jeannie would hold that too because we're waiting for additional information. We're not saying not to issue it. We're just, they have to come in and provide some more information.
And also, there's maybe a few that we haven't gotten their fees yet. They were waiting for the building inspections, but in reality, they're all okay until twelve thirty-one.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So there's still two more weeks for those who haven't complied, like waiting for a building inspection or whatever the case may be. But, uh, it appears that every other person on this list is in potentially good standing. Okay. Any other questions about that? All right, hearing none. Um, this is also a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
I am a yes?
Yes.
John? And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Under orders of the day, financial matters. We have our director of finance, Kim Collins, with us this evening to give us a quarterly financial report, and that would be on quarter one, be July one to October one.
September, oh, yeah, September thirtieth.
Yeah. Right on. All yours.
So in terms of the report, it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, the departments get this on a monthly basis. Um, you typically get it on a quarterly basis. It just, um, it's the year-to-date budget separated by department, salaries and non-salaries. That's how we vote the budget. So that's how look at it. In terms of how we've spent the budget through September thirtieth versus last year, last year we were at seventy, uh, seventy-one, seventy-one percent expended, and this year we're at seventy percent. So pretty comparable to last year. There's nothing, um, really else that I can kind of share with you about the budget, but if you have questions, I can answer those.
So you saw the questions I sent back?
Yes. Um, so do you just want me to go through them?
Yes, please, just, just a summary, because I tried to summarize the, the, um, questions that came from the council. Nothing, nothing's earth-shattering. It's just clarification, I think.
Yeah. Um, the first question, I think the question was specifically related to the gas line items in the departments. The vehicle gas expense is done through LPV EC, so.
They're brokered for that, then?
They do the procurement, um, they get the bid, they tell, you know, they tell us what the rates are going to be, and then accounting works with the departments at the beginning of the year to determine what their annual expenditures are going to be. We do a blanket purchase order for that. So what you're seeing is encumbrances for the entire cost, so it's not that they've spent that all at this point.
Perfect. Gotcha.
So they will spend it by the end of the year, but they're not overspent.
Okay.
Okay. Um, see, the salary items, I was a little confused. The question was that the salary line items across all departments are fully expended. The only ones that I see that are fully expended include encumbrances for the school. So they typically encumber all of their salaries.
Right.
The departments do not. So there's actually available
Okay.
Is for all the departments at this point. Okay.
Uh, I think it was just a clarification as well for the public that even though it looks like there's zero left in a line item, it's because the, the encumbrance is front-loaded in Ju- in July of.
Yeah. And one thing I will say this year, we tried, uh, the way the system works, we have to put in a requisition for every single bill that we pay unless there's a P O sitting out there so that it's encumbered. So we tried to have everybody really look at contracts, really look at how much they're going to spend for the year and do blanket purchase orders. So you may see throughout the year that it'll appear that the budget's less available than it really is just because there are so many encumbrances out there. Okay. Um, certified free cash. The question was, does, does the amount of certified free cash include the proposed two-point-four million towards the purchase of three eighty-two North Main Street? Um, and since there's no purchase and sale, are those funds available? So as of seven one twenty-three, our certified free cash was seven-point-four million, uh, seven-point-six million. That does not include the two-point-four million because when that was voted by town council, it was transferred into a capital account so that we could fund the purchase, um, of the building. A hundred thousand of that was allocated towards improvements in the building.
Yeah.
And then there's thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents remaining of that hundred thousand. And then there's the additional two-point-three million. So that money is sitting in that capital account.
So it's like an escrow?
Yes.
I, um, um, non-accountant vocabulary.
No, so it's sitting there. It's available for what it was appropriated for, which was the purchase of the building. If town council determines that they're not going to purchase that building and they want to appropriate it for something else, that would be another motion.
Okay, so it could down the road, should the decision be made, and I'm not sending signals here to anybody, um, were that to happen, that that two-point-four could be reallocated to some other, it's matter.
The two-point-three.
The two-point-three.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could release it. It would just flow back to free cash, but then you wouldn't have access to it until free cash is certified again in July of twenty-four.
No, I'm, I-
Or you could re-appropriate it, yes.
Okay, so then the seven-point-six million, um, is, does not include the two-point-three. And so will be available for needs as it comes to the council during the balance of this fiscal year.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Um, there was a question on the liability insurance line item. It's overspent by twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, for prior year and the year before, that line item has always been underbudgeded. So there was a transfer of seventy-five, seventy-seven thousand, I think in twenty-two, and then there was another eighty-one thousand in twenty-three. So we did look at that account when, when we were setting the budget for twenty-four and we increased it, and, you know, we were given a percentage of five percent. That's what they expected. Um, it to go up. It actually went up closer to eight percent. And, um, it's, you know, that line item was something we're going to look at in the twenty-five budget to make sure that we're really on track with it.
So Deb had done some research. Uh, we received the letter from Maya, like, at the end of April. So my guess is we were pretty much already set with the budget.
Pretty well.
Submission.
Yeah.
And, uh, we didn't go back and add the two-point-eight percent or whatever it was. Uh, so we're getting close now.
Better than eighty. Um, let's see.
I think the last question had to do with what Tom has already spoken about, that you and he and, um, who was the third one?
Rebecca.
Rebecca, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
An Olga, really?
An Olga, um, are trying to determine what, uh, marching orders, if you will, you want to give to the department head. So I think the question that came from one of the counselors is on that, that same line. Is there, is there advice that the council should be aware of? And it sounds like we'll know that soon. If, by our next meeting, what, what your orders are to the-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, the, the memo's set to go out Friday. Um, uh, by our next meeting, we'll probably have submissions, I would imagine, from, well, I can think of at least one department head that will have it in by then, uh, but probably more. Um, and then, yeah, we'll have, uh, we'll have a good idea where we're, what we're looking like. So, yeah.
I mean, one thing that I can say about the budget for this year, there are new templates that we've created and that will go out to the departments. They're self-calculating. So salaries should be pretty streamlined for everybody.
Yay.
Um, you know, I mean, they're, they're basically set up so that everybody can put a grade and a step in, and it's just going to calculate everything for the year. So it, it should be a lot-
More efficient, like I said.
It should be more efficient for everybody. It should be simpler. I hope so. It will calculate, if we put COLA percentages in there, it'll calculate that merits, anything, um, any assumptions that we put in there. And then there will be historical actuals on those templates for everybody for the past two years so that they're comparing historicals, budget, and then, um, setting their budgets for the new year.
Great.
Told you we're excited.
I know it. All good news. Any other questions?
I just wanted to-
Sure.
Um, Kim, uh, on the free cash, since we've kind of had a lot the last couple of years, do you see that trend happening in the current fiscal year as well?
So one thing I will say about free cash is that all towns pretty much saw large increases in free cash kind of since the pandemic. I think it's because people really took a look at their budgets, they reduced them, or they spent less and then they were able to turn more back. One of the things that has really been helping our free cash is that there, um, the bu- some of the budgets have some excess funds in them, um, especially with the health insurance. So depending on how we budget for health insurance this year, I mean, I think you're pro- I don't think it's going to keep growing the way it's been growing, but I don't think it's going to drop drastically.
Gotcha. Great.
Good. Other questions? Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you for the questions in advance.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciated.
Kim, the next item on the agenda is, is you as well. So as to rescind our May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three vote to authorize borrowing five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents for highway constr- one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents for highway construction since it is no longer needed for the purpose for which it was approved. So I will entertain a motion for that, Connor.
Sure. Order that the town of East Long Meadow rescinds the following amount that has been authorized to be borrowed, but which is no longer needed for the purpose it was initially approved. The unissued amount, five-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, one-hundred-seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents. The date of loan order approval was May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and the original purpose was highway construction.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, it can, what's the backstory here?
Um, so I don't know if you remember, maybe a couple of meetings ago, we had to rescind other bond authorizations, which included some for highway construction. The way, and this is just kind of a carryover maybe from when you had a Board of Selectmen, you have different form of government. Um, a lot of, you know, they basically read that we're authorizing borrowing for chapter ninety funds. And in truth, you you can just borrow for anticipation of grant funds. You don't have to set up that authorization. And we don't typically borrow for that. We just make sure that we're creating requisitions in a timely manner so that we don't have to borrow. So these are just old authorizations that are sitting out there that need to be rescinded.
Okay.
Should that be a motion that is removed from the budget hearing when we have the chapter ninety funds or reworded?
It's, we've already reworded it for the new year to make sure that that doesn't continue to happen.
Got you. Oh, when we do the twenty-one motion.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-one motion salute.
Yeah, kind of like that. Any other questions for Kim or Tom?
No, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, good sense. It's very evident that you're both, you're all three working very hard to um in the interest of efficiency to streamline all these processes and and um tighten up procedures. So we appreciate that. Okay, um, voting. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. So Marilyn, we'll start with you.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
I am a yes as well and Anna?
Yes.
Very straightforward. Thank you, Kim.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Under H C, approval of minutes of our November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three open session. That's that. John?
I make a motion to approve the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three open session minutes.
Second.
Your not body. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? No, hearing none. Um, we'll start with Anna.
Yes.
I am a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Great. Before we move to adjournment, um, Tom, did you want to introduce to the rest of the council?
Sure.
Our
So, yeah, our our new deputy town manager is here, Rebecca Lisi. Um, this is her first meeting, so I I don't know that she, I know she's-
Rebecca and and Anna has to.
Okay. So, yeah, we're excited. She's uh been hitting the ground running, obviously. Uh, in particular in the planning department, uh, our de facto planning director over there. Uh, so uh, no, we're, I'm excited. We're excited to have her as part of the team. Everything's been been going pretty great.
Great, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no further um business come before this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion uh to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anna?
Yes.
I am a yes. Connor? Johns and Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned. We will be back in session in the new year on January the ninth at six P M. Until then, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thanks to you.